Good evening. We'll call to order the City Commission for the City of El Dorado on October 9th, 2019. Could we proceed with roll call?
Mayor.
President.
Commissioner Guthrie?
Here.
Commissioner Willis?
Here.
Commissioner Guthrie?
Here.
Commissioner Willis?
President.
Next on our agenda would be invocation. We have Pastor Jordan Counts. Do you lead us? I'm sorry, Druden. It is what it says.
Here?
Yes, right there would be great.
Let's pray. God of all creation, we thank you for your love. We thank you for the resources you've put here for us to live in. You are wise, you are loving, and you came down to be with us, to serve. May your spirit, may your presence be with us with this meeting as we talk about the needs of the El Dorado community, and may we honor you in all we say and do. In Jesus' name we ask, amen.
Amen. Thank you.
God bless, Betty Chris.
Join us in invocation, please. I'm sorry, pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So recognitions, we have something kind of fun. Anybody need their fingernails trimmed? Firehouse, fire stations or fire, El Dorado Fire Department's going to share what they got with Firehouse Subs grant.
First of all, I'd like to take the opportunity to thank you for being able to speak to you tonight. We are here to recognize the Firehouse Public Safety Foundation for their generous donation to the fire department and present to you the new equipment we were able to purchase with this grant. I would also like to recognize Andy and Megan Reese from the Wichita area Firehouse Sub Restaurants for their support and the process. They were instrumental in helping us get this grant. Through the generosity of the Firehouse Public Safety Foundation, the fire department has been able to make an important update to its vehicle extrication equipment by purchasing new battery-powered vehicle extrication tools, which are right here with me this evening. These tools will allow for easier and faster deployment than our existing equipment. Our existing equipment was purchased in the early 2000's and limits deployment and use due to being tethered with hydraulic hoses to a pump. While the existing equipment still functions and accomplishes the extrication task, these new pieces of equipment are lighter, more mobile, and are preferred equipment for vehicle rescue operations. The bottom line is these tools allow for faster deployment and will equate to life-saving minutes for those patients requiring extrication before treatment, and allow the fire department to provide better service to the community and its customers. So to conclude, I would like to thank the commission for their time this evening and to thank the Firehouse Public Safety Foundation and the Firehouse Subs Restaurants for their support to the fire department and the community it serves, and to officially place these pieces of equipment into operation tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. No demonstrations?
You volunteer the car?
Caleb.
Caleb.
They like to get a picture?
Yeah.
Does it say?
Yeah. It'll run, we can put two of these N-28's Milwaukee batteries. It'll run off of just one, but...
Two batteries allow it to run longer.
Yeah.
So.
Milwaukee makes that now?
So that's a Milwaukee?
Milwaukee just provides the batteries. It's actually a TNT dual.
Well, they make everything else.
It is heavy. It's all out here.
Yeah, yeah, very much so. So yeah, we can put a battery on either side of the room, not much longer. And then we got the good drift on here where we can actually grab them with gloves. And that's, that's just how you console them is just...
And if you'd like to see that those are really lighter, you can come over and lift the ones, our prior, once we had a prior.
The other ones are up there on the truck.
Because not only did they have to lug those tools, but they had to lug a pump along with it in order to be able to get down and use it.
Oh, the pump didn't come off the truck?
It would come off the truck, yes.
But you had a port of power for it, too?
It's about the size of a lawnmower engine, so.
This is obviously a man thing.
You just turn it, it's like a motorcycle.
Charger for that, too?
Yep.
That's expensive, very expensive.
Yep. I'm not sure how many batteries we...
We got a total of eight batteries and four chargers.
Nice.
Awesome.
So, yeah, I mean tremendous amount of runtime there.
We're also able to get the chains that allows you to do some other extrication things.
Well, sure.
It is heavy.
It is fun. If we get a chance to cut open a car, guys. Apparently not a person.
All the weight's out on the cutter.
Right in the center.
Yeah. Scoot over, Caleb. There you go.
It's gotta be carbon to cut through everything like that, cut through stainless and everything.
I think so.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you. Thanks for sharing.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Don't forget to plug them in.
No offense, but I hope you never need them on me.
Thank you.
All right. Next on our agenda would be personal appearances. Anyone from the audience wish to address the commission? Seeing none, we'll move on to, that was personal appearance, public comments. Consent agenda. The consent agenda was, for tonight's meeting, was sent out last week. Everybody have a chance to look through it. Any questions or comments on the consent agenda? The items in the consent agenda? If none, I would entertain a motion.
I move that the consent agenda is presented, be approved.
Second.
Case been moved and seconded. Any further question or comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Seems like forever since we last met, doesn't it? Okay.
Well, we've met.
Right.
We've met.
Since I've been here. I've missed, I've missed one. With no old business, we'll move on to new business, liquor tax distribution. Sir, anyone from staff want to speak to that?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, we received an application from Thrive Butler and the Safe House. They are requesting $1,800 from the liquor tax fund for the purpose of funding a babysitter during some of the programs that they offer. And I believe last time you granted some funds to Kids Need to Eat. There was approximately $6,000 or $7,000 in the account. I apologize if I don't have the agenda item in front of me at this time, but there was still, we still have funds remaining in the account now, so plenty to fund this and...
So is this $1,800 per agency or the total of $1,800?
Total $1,800. The check will actually be written with Thrive for the...
Okay.
Scott just shared his agenda item with me, so you have about $7,000 left right now. After this, it'll be closer to five, but still a balance. We haven't actually had any past, so that's nice.
Can only be distributed to organizations that assist children who are victims of domestic violence. Thrive came in and had a, made a presentation. Do we feel they fit this definition?
Just to babysit kids that are at the safe house, right?
It'll be the safe house and through the Thrive program. The Thrive program helps families, it teaches them life skills for families who are struggling, be it with financial issues, with issues with alcohol or drug abuse, that kind of thing. And so the state law currently is unclear. We had Ashlyn look at it back in the spring, when we distributed the funds back in the spring. It is, it can be done for either victims of domestic violence or drug and alcohol abuse. Yes, thank you. And so kind of both places work, or both areas work, and Thrive kind of fits in the drug and alcohol.
We've given Thrive money before, haven't we?
Yes, we have.
Okay, so it sounds like it's a criteria then.
Yeah.
Okay. So I don't want to rehash that. I wasn't aware that we'd given them money before.
Yeah, they applied in the spring with the safe house and Family Life Center.
Okay. All right. Well, I don't want to rehash that, though. So thank you for that reminder. Any further question or comment? None, I'd entertain a motion.
I move...
Go ahead.
I move to allocate the liquor tax monies in the amount of $1,800 to Thrive Butler and to authorize the city manager to execute the appropriate documents and contracts with the recipient, and that these funds are distributed consistent with Kansas statutes.
Okay, so moved and seconded. Any further comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is Orshlin Funding Agreement.
Same question for you is a funding agreement that would be executed between the city and Orshlin's Home and Farm Supply Company. They have submitted their $5,000 application fee for a tax increment financing district. And one thing that we'd like to do is move forward with this funding agreement, which allows them to transfer to the city $20,000 into an account that we will then use to pay for professional services associated primarily with the due diligence portions of the tax increment financing preparation. So cost benefit analysis, market analysis, there's a few other analyses that are done that is then provided not only to you as the governing body, but also to other taxing entities, governing bodies, to include the school district, Butler County, and the Butler Community College, as they will all be notified of the, number one, the due diligence, and then number two, the public hearing creating, or the public hearing that is required in order to create a tax increment financing district. So all of that, as well as publication costs and the cost of preparing ordinances and other materials associated with the tax increment financing district would be paid out of that initial $20,000. In the event that $20,000 is not enough to cover all of those expenses, we will go back to Orshlin and ask them to put in additional dollars. But in the event that those monies are not spent in their entirety, or for whatever reason the district is not approved, the remaining balance will be reimbursed back to the company. Any monies that have been spent, however, will not be reimbursed. And so in essence, the city is not at risk for any expenses related to the preparation of the public hearing and ordinances, et cetera, as well as the due diligence portion. So this is, this is really a pass-through whereby the company provides money to the city so that those monies aren't, they don't come out of the city's general fund. So with that, I'll take any questions that you may have.
You may have said something and I missed it. If it's more than this amount, they use this same agreement to put more money into this company?
Yeah, so we will make a request to the company to provide an additional stipend to draw down from.
Well, we need to go through this agreement process again to do that, or since it's been stipulated at $20,000, or?
I believe the agreement provides for, there's an initial funding mechanism and then there's additional funding mechanisms provided in the agreement.
Okay, thank you. Well, this is exciting. I think it's an opportunity for some development on the west central and happy to have Orshlin's make that expansion and that investment. And I don't see, yeah, this is, this is, I mean, I support it. I guess any other questions or comments from the commission?
Do we have to have an open hearing before we approve this?
Not this actual agreement. The, you will have a public hearing coming up. At subsequent meeting, but this is kind of the pre, preactions necessary.
Thank you, though.
Are you ready?
Yeah, I entertain a motion.
I move to approve the funding agreement with Orshlin's and direct the mayor to sign the agreement, or sign said agreement.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any further comment? All in favor, say aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Next would be a report on dilapidated homes update.
Yeah, Mayor and Commissioners, at your August 19th meeting, we discussed, and prior to that throughout the summer, we discussed dilapidated homes and specifically a list of five, and going through the procedures of condemnation and holding a public hearing. That public hearing was held at that August 19th meeting. At that meeting, we set a date of September 27th for four of those properties, which are 1107 West Carr, 1108 West Carr, 426 West Seventh Avenue, and 802 South Taylor, to at least commence repairs or demolition of those structures by September 27th. That September 27th date was 30 days after the official publication was in the paper. We have not heard from any of those owners, lien holders, interested parties. Because of that, staff went out and solicited bids for demolition on those properties. We received quotes back from, or bids back from two companies, Stan Farms and Pearson Properties. And you'll see those within your agenda item. The cumulative cost for the demolition of those four structures, the low bid was Stan's Farm at $17,900. There was one more structure that we had, that held the public hearing on, and that was 205 North Washington. You granted them 60 days to begin repairs or demolition of that structure. That date will come October 27th. We have heard from the owner of that property. It was mentioned that evening in the public hearing that they were going to list it the beginning of October for an auction. They are asking for an extension. They're asking staff for an extension. Thought you'd make you aware of that, but probably at our first November meeting, we'll give you an update then on that 205 North Washington.
How long of an extension did they want?
They haven't said. And it's, there has been some medical issues with the owner and they're, they're telling us, based on the condition of the medical issues, that that owner is unable to sign legal documents. The city isn't really asking to sign anything. We're just making, asking them to make a repair. So haven't got a lot of detail on that. It's just, they're asking for more time. So I think it's best maybe on that, you know, November 4th, I think, is our next meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah. Maybe update you where we're at on that.
I think by November 4th, if they don't have a date, a signed auction date, then it needs to come down. I mean, even if somebody buys it, they're going to tear it down, I would think. I mean, I can't imagine anybody putting any money in that piece of property. I've seen it up close.
Yeah.
It's pretty, it's, it's dilapidated. It's bad. It's structurally unsound and...
Oh, we gave her talk October 27th? Is that what we did?
You gave her 60 days, and by the time the publication happened, that's when the 60 days started. So it ends up October 27th.
Because if I remember right, it sounded to me like she'd already...
It was going to be done deal.
Yeah, it was a done deal. She had it signed, and she talked to, I believe it was Sungren Auction.
I thought she already had that on it.
Yeah.
They're going to have an auction, but a lot, you know, sometimes those things don't have their play outs.
So you're thinking November, by November 4th?
But the November would be after this deadline.
Right.
Right. Just, just like this evening. This is the first commission meeting.
Okay.
We're in front of you after the deadline.
Because we'll be meeting again on the 21st. Or is there any reason for updating on the 21st?
Well, yeah, I mean, definitely David could do it in a city's meeting.
November's fine. I just want to make sure that we're following protocol. Thanks. So that, that date came and went as of October, I'm going to beat this horse for what, the long race? That date came and went in October 27th, and we're going to meet in November to see if we grant another extension? Is that what I'm hearing?
I think staff will come up with you at that time a quote for demolition. And if that's your preference, then, like you have before you tonight, you have a motion authorizing David to sign the contract.
I'm going to hear this, right. You're going to come to us with either a recommendation to extend for reasons, for valid reasons, or with a demolition quote. Okay, thank you. That clears it up.
Now, come, if they do have an auction and it sells, then does the meter start running again? Then does the new owner have X amount of time to do something? Or is that our call?
The, the public hearing has been held.
It's done deal.
So notification has been filed on the deed of this property with those dates. So any potential owner, transfer of ownership, whatever.
Knows this is hanging out there.
It is in the deed.
It's a cloud on the deed.
Okay.
It is a cloud on the deed, right?
It's on the deed.
Okay. Okay.
I would say November 4th, as far as I'd go, I'll go out with it personally, unless they come in here with Joe Sungren to tell me that Joe's, you know, you have to convince me to change my mind at this point, I think. I was happy, I was happy to give her the other 30 days when she was here.
Six, they gave her 60 days.
Or 60 days, so yes, so.
And we started this, reminds you, we started this process in May.
Right.
So that's when they're notified until August to communicate with staff prior to a public hearing.
So this today is just to authorize the other fi, other four?
This is just saying, hey, we got, we got these quotes on these four structures.
Past our deadline.
We're past our deadline.
Yeah.
If you so desire to allow David to enter into contract for demolition.
Is there, is there... I lost my train of thought for a second. Is there money in the demolition fund right now?
So right now, the balance of demolition fund, I put it in here. It's $15,653.
Right now?
Yes.
And we've got a $17,900?
For the transfer.
So we haven't transferred the $19 money yet, right?
Yeah, it hasn't been put in that fund.
How much is that?
$15,000.
$15,000.
Another 15.
So you'll be at 30 after the transfer? Is that what?
Yeah.
We have 15 now, we'll put another 15, and we'll have 30, so we have the money to cover this.
And we'll have the money to cover the other one, too, if...
I would hope so, yeah.
Yeah, because it'll probably be around five.
Yeah, we, we felt like we got very recent, very good, a very good bid.
I agree.
That, that firm has demolished a number of homes in El Dorado, has done a good job. So we feel good about the quote, the bids we received.
Do they do any salvaging?
You know, I don't know if they do. We've had people ask us in the past if they could salvage, and we've just said no. Once it's in our hands, it's, it needs to go to the landfill out of the city limits and not be in backyards somewhere or causing nuisance elsewhere.
I meant, does this company do any salvaging?
No, I don't know.
I don't believe that.
I don't know that they would take the time for, for that.
For that much money, there's probably...
More fun to just drop the ball on the rug and let it go.
I think it's in and out and tear out the foundation, backfill, cap the utilities and get out of there.
Yeah.
Speaking of backfill, when somebody does demolish a house, is it not their responsibility to fill in the hole that was created by it?
It is.
Okay, well, we have one on Tuanda Street that, the creative way of demolishing a house by pulling the front wall out, but you know, it got done, but there's been no fill.
But it's holding water out there.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Thanks Scott for the explanation. Any further questions or comments from the commission? If none, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that since Stan's Farms has submitted the lowest and best bid of $17,900 for demolition of 1107 West Carr, 1108 West Carr, 426 West Seventh, 802 South Taylor, that the city manager be directed to award the contract to said contractor, providing that the company furnish the proper bonds.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you.
And, and one thing I forgot to mention on this, those costs will be assessed back onto that property in hopes that someone else purchases a lot and then we get a return on that, which would go back with the building demolition fund via special assessments. However, if it ends up a sheriff's sale, then past taxes, specials are just kind of...
A dollar scraped off.
A dollar scraped off.
Unless they bid up to that amount, and then that's when the county will divvy out the past taxes, specials do if the property brings it up to sale.
So do we have, in that case, do, does the city have first position over the county for back taxes?
I doubt it. Probably. I doubt it.
If, if I recall going through the sheriff's sale of acid, kind of the pecking order was county first and then...
Well, because they'd be the oldest, because they won't sell it until it's three years in arrears, so... So that was, that was assessed to it before our deal, so it's probably...
It's worth an ass.
It's with the date, you know. It goes by date. Whoever filed first usually is when it goes.
And, and the same with other properties around town, you know, they don't get mowed, and we don't get paid, and are in that position, those fees are placed on that property as well as a special assessment.
What you hope is the property brings more than all the assessments against it, and then everybody gets paid.
Right.
Or if they get a great off on a lot and someone sells it and pays those specials to us and builds a new, new home. So that would be ideal.
Okay, thank you. Next on our agenda would be KDOT Cost Sharing Program.
Yeah, as we discussed at a work session, the program was recently released as part of the new transportation program, and it, and it's a unique program. It's new for municipalities and county governments. And what it is, is a cost share program, and the intent of this program is to make improvements to the highway system, improvements off system, just improvements that improve the community, improve the counties, retain jobs, can lead to job growth. And with the, in, in a project that we've discussed a lot over the years, and I definitely hear a lot from citizens, is their section McCollum and Main. And the difficulty people have traversing through there, their peak hours in the morning when school's beginning and when the school's getting out. So with that, what you have is staff believes and has looked at this and as, and as well as worked with PEC on looking at a concept of a roundabout at that intersection. And what that roundabout would, would do would definitely calm traffic, allow for ease of flow through that intersection. It'll also set us up well if and when the need ever arises for a northern traffic way around El Dorado. We definitely, even today, need to start looking at that. Sixth Avenue is at capacity. And with Sixth Avenue and Main kind of being our junction to get to northern El Dorado, capacity's going to be needed added, need to be added sometime in the future. As well, industry's going to spur that as we, as we work towards marketing the West Industrial Park and marketing property. as, as we, as we work towards marketing the West Industrial Park and marketing, uh, property between Refinery Road, Topeka, and Oil Hill Road. So, what, um, we are proposing, and the application on this project is to actually do this Friday, is the construction of a roundabout. Um, the estimated cost for construction of the roundabout is one point four six seven million dollars, and that is realigning, realigning the geometrics completely of that intersection. Um, having two lanes throughout the roundabout to be able to accommodate, um, truck traffic. And then also included in this is a mill and overlay of Main Street from Twelfth Avenue up to the intersection of McCollum. What we're proposing is that the City of El Dorado, um, participate with thirty-one percent of the total project cost. Um, the program says we shall have a minimum of a twenty-five percent match. Um, we able to contribute a little bit more because of the mill and overlay, and that will give us bonus points on the application, because any extra funds, we can go above and beyond the twenty-five percent, um, gives us more, uh, bonus points. So, what we're asking you, uh, this evening is to, uh, direct the city manager to submit an application to Kansas Department of Transportation for cost share program. In the communication I've had, this is gonna be a very, very competitive, uh, program. They're hoping annually that this program will have about eleven million dollars statewide, um, available to mun- municipalities and county governments. However, with this fall application, there is a one-time, um, infusion of an additional fifty million dollars, and part of that is to repay KDOT some of the funds that have been shifted to general fund of the state in the past. So, we, we, we can definitely need to continue to tell our story in El Dorado and the problems we have. Successful or not, we think it's a worthy application to submit.
It'll definitely change that intersection.
Yeah.
For the better.
For the better, yeah. Brace yourself, here comes a roundabout. Okay, I think that's great. Any, and, and, uh, support getting the application, you're right, even if not successful, we're, we are telling our story. Great way to put that. Uh, any further question or comment? Uh, if, if none, I entertain a motion.
I move to direct the city manager to submit an application to Kansas Department of Transportation Cost Share Program.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further question or comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Good to see KDOT getting back into business.
Yeah, programs and funds for locals.
Yeah.
We'd love to see that.
Okay, next on our agenda is N R P renewal.
So, our, uh, current N R P, which was adopted almost five years ago, is set to expire at the end of the year, and we've discussed the renewal, uh, for the next five years, um, throughout the last month, and talked about maybe some tweaks to our current program. Today, in two thousand nineteen, there are a hundred and sixty-five parcels, um, within the City of El Dorado that are part of the program. And what the program does is let eligible properties, um, repair, rehab, or construct new, um, meeting certain criteria that we'll discuss here in a little bit, um, to improve these properties, and then see a rebate of ninety-five percent of the increased value on their property in taxes annually. And as, as far as appraised value, there is over, there is twenty-eight point nine million dollars worth, worth of property in the City of El Dorado, in the, in our N R P program. So, that kind of tells you a story how, how our program is, is pretty substantial. There's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of good that has come down, ca- came out of our program. Um, in your packet is two versions of the plan. The one with red on it was a working draft that we discussed at our, we discussed at our, a work session with, in red, some staff thoughts on changes. The packet after it, which is the neighborhood revitalization plan, is kind of what we heard coming out of the work session, um, of some changes. So, I'll go through the criteria here. So, property to, to be eligible, um, must be within the City of El Dorado. It's, and we sw- and cha- made a minor change to this, and it is section C. So, condemn properties as determined by the building inspector's office or the commission, or any other future properties that qualify through a description of blight, health, environmental, or safety issues, or gr- grant programs as established and qualified by the City of El Dorado. So, we, uh, took out the and/or and, uh, made that, that just an and. So, it's and future properties that qualify through a description of blight, health, and environmental safety issues. To kind of, we heard, uh, in the work session, concerns about making sure the properties that have environmental issues or special conditions, flood plains, those sorts of, um, things would be eligible. We also added sect- section E, uh, which is any property or structure located within the City of El Dorado Opportunity Zone. So, if you are within that opportunity zone, that property is automatically eligible to be, um, in our neighborhood revitalization program. And on residential properties, prior, we had, um, eligible properties, if they're constructed before nineteen seventy, they were eligible, and we have changed that and just put in, the structure is at least fifty years old. And the rest has stayed the same as we discussed in the work session. We still do have removed, have removed from the program, um, new homes and new subdivisions. So, new homes being built on green space, previously undeveloped, um, lots, those would not be eligible as this draft plan before you.
Okay. Thank you, Scott.
Yep.
Um, I appreciate it, everybody, uh, circulating the memo, sorry, I missed Wednesday's discussion. So, thanks for entertaining that when my absence. Like, the only thing I have on here that I'd like to continue discussion on is the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar, uh, ceiling, specifically as it would relate to opportunity zone. Um, I, uh, would like this commission to consider altering that or changing that, uh, either removing it or having it a, a per dwelling unit, something like that, that would encourage multifamily, because two hundred and fifty thousand and some of that arena is just, it's, it's, it's not a very large incentive.
Well, the, the description that we were given last week was, is that, and the reason that number was there was to, for our partners who have to approve it also.
Mm-hmm.
And that was, um, the last time the negotiation was a little bit tough on that. Am I not correct?
It, it, it's always been, and, and even with sitting city commissions, it's been having a limit, not having a limit, so we'll just kind of talk through some of that history.
Okay, yeah, that's why, so, I mean, just with that, I'm fine with the number. I'm, I, I don't think it, I don't know if it. I'm, I'm fine with the number where it's at, especially after kind of the discussion we had on last week.
Well, and I, and I, and I appreciate that, but I, I would like to have that conversation some more, because I think, um, specifically as it relates to multifamily, I mean, if we want to put the number to single family, um, that's one thing, but I think multifamily is really limiting, and I, and if we do that and also hone it in on the opportunity zone, I really want to keep our opportunity zone as wide open for incentives as possible. And, uh, that's where I would like to have more discussion. I would suggest that we, we, I mean, two hundred and fifty thousand for single family and, and either no limit or two hundred and fifty thousand per dwelling unit for multifamily is what I would like to consider.
So, if you put in a triplex, you'd be up to seven hundred and fifty thousand? Is that kind of what you're thinking?
Mm-hmm.
And I see the opportunity zone as being more open to that type of dwelling than single family homes, because a lot of times you're going to get older people who are downsizing, but want to be close to what's going on, and the, you know, the ability to walk to where they're going. Of course, the opportunity zone is, what, the whole city? Is that what you keep telling me?
No.
A kid worrying.
Census tract is essentially from the river west to the hospital.
To the hospital.
From, uh, Third Street-ish down south to Traffic Way, something.
Yeah, there, there's some areas north of Third that go on to Sixth and Main, but, um, generally east El Dorado.
Mm-hmm.
You are taking an area that is blighted.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's the reason it is eligible, the opportunity zone, yeah.
And we need to develop that.
Yeah, and I think, uh, removing all, or, or providing maximum incentive is, is there, and to me, it's, 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 this is at no cost to the city, and I understand if our partners, if they make me push back on that, I think the only, if I remember right, it was the county pushing back because of being unfair to neighboring communities and, and their N R Ps, but again, honing in on an opportunity zone, I think, is an easy thing to defend, uh, at that level.
The other thing, uh, that may go along with that is, the City of El Dorado is the only city, or in that matter, census tract within Butler County that has the opportunity zone designation. So, it is kind of an anomaly in the county in that no other city has an opportunity zone.
So, we need to take advantage of it.
On Asper's addition, okay? On the west side of Emporia, it's not, you can't do the N R P. But on the east side, that falls in the opportunity zone, so all that, all that that goes east will fall into the N R P.
Well, when we get into.
Where you have this word is.
When we get into res- specifics of residential properties, it only speaks that it's fifty years or older or infill on a previously developed lot. Um, when you get into the opportunity zone, um, which is part E of number one there, that leans more towards non-residential.
So, wouldn't be an opportunity to, for that addition to have that?
That, that's the way I see it.
Okay. Okay?
Well, any, any residential or commercial development within an opportunity zone would be eligible under the auspices of this, the way this is written. It, it doesn't, it doesn't specify that it's residential or commercial. So, if you are developing within an opportunity zone, if you are developing properties or structures, and it's located within the geographic confinement of the opportunity zone, you would be eligible for the neighborhood revitalization program.
It'd be kind of an incentive for that addition, though, to have that.
Right, but if you are located across street, in the case of the example you mentioned, that property would not be eligible under this, under the definition of the opportunity zone. That, they would have to meet one of the other definitions under B, C, or, or D, in order to meet the N R P incentive. So, yes, unfortunately, there would be, there will be some instances where some properties will not be eligible, and those properties may be exactly located across the street from properties that are eligible based upon the opportunity zone designation. But the opportunity zone is a geographically defined, um, definition. These other definitions are not geographically defined, so they can reside anywhere within the geographic matters of the city. The opportunity zone, however, does not. And so, there, there is a distinction there in that, depending on where your property is located, you may or may not be eligible because of that distinction.
So, just to expand upon Greg's question there, he said that, so like that property, the east of that line would be eligible only in the fact that it's in the opportunity zone?
That is correct.
If that property, that same piece of property was fifty foot to the west, it would not qualify because it's a green zone and not an infill. Is that?
That is correct. It would have to meet the other definitions, uh, as, as include your plan.
Okay.
Right.
Okay, so, Santa Fe and all that that's not been developed yet will fall into this?
I believe that's correct. I'd have to look at a map to verify. I believe that.
So, it'd be kind of an incentive package to be afforded on that addition to, to get it done, could be.
Right.
Okay, um, uh, will the commission, at this point, willing to, uh, remove the ceiling in the, in the opportunity zone?
You want to table it and bring it back on the next one?
Like, they're out of time. That's why this is, because they've still got to go to all the other, all the other committees, all the other, the, the school board and the county and all that, to get approved by them.
Do we have a straight session scheduled for next week? We do?
Oh, do you have those people coming from El Doradoing?
From where?
El Doradoing, but.
Yeah, 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 um. Well, I mean, if they, I mean, I guess, depending on how you would proceed, if, if you're open to that idea, then we can move forward that direction, but, I mean, I guess, if you need additional discussion, we can probably make that happen in a special meeting.
Let's do this. Um, I would make a motion, uh, to approve the N R P, uh, plan as presented with the, with the alteration of re- of removing the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar, uh, limit on the, in, for res- for any properties in the opportunity zone, residential or non-residential. So, I make that motion. Is there a second?
With no limit?
No limit, only in the opportunity zone.
You think you can sell that?
So, non-residential today has always been, and even in this plan.
No, no limit.
So, this is, this is.
This is just adding the residential into it.
So, um, in the scenario of a triplex getting built, there would be no limit based on the increase.
But my question was, you think you can sell it to the county and the school district and the Juco?
I think it, there's rationalization there. I mean, I think you guys have thought about it and understand the importance and the significance of our opportunity zone.
Yeah, and given the fact that, again, we are the only city in the county with an opportunity zone, the county can't utilize the, the answer that.
Can't say it wouldn't be fair to their, to the other.
Right, right.
Okay, I see, okay.
So, do I have to second your motion?
And it, it, it doesn't have a second yet.
So, if.
We've got more discussion.
So, if it, so if you get kicked back from them, are we willing to lower back down?
Kick back from?
From the other.
Oh, from the other.
From the other entities.
I, I think what, what, what'll help as we, as we move forward is if we can find a, a member of the commission that's available to attend those meetings with staff and be the elected official representing and, and discussing this and being able to answer those questions as an elected official, that definitely helps.
Do we have a second?
We do. Commissioner Lewis, second.
Okay.
So, we can continue discussion. Thanks, Greg.
I mean, I see, I see his point, if you, you know, someone comes in, if you come in and build a, a triplex or some, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you're gonna build much of a triplex.
Yeah.
So, I see, I see the, the logic to it, as long as we can sell it.
Seeing housing, apartment complexes, um, those sorts of things. As, you know, we've, we've discussed in the, at the work session, some of those projects in the past, like, the builders that were.
like the builders that were hopeful they would be eligible in this entirety, except they were eligible up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars being a residential unit, and their investment was a lot higher than that.
And what we were talking about at the work session where for it to be three separate deals, you'd have to, you'd have to.
It's an individual.
Redraw lot lines.
Our.
Even if there was a common, a common wall, you'd have to go ahead and re, redraw your lot lines to have three or four or.
Each, each unit. Each unit have a, have its own tax ID camera number, tax ID number, and, and then that could be eligible.
Which, which would work for condominium type things, but wouldn't work for multifamily. Wouldn't work for rentals.
Your, your opportunity zone is pretty built out, I mean, so someone comes in and makes an improvement like this, uh, I think it's justified.
Yeah, they're going to be tearing something down.
They're tearing something down and, and, and infill, um, infill's an expensive thing to do, so whatever more, again, incentives we can do for that is, is all the better. All right, so moved in second. Any further question or comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Motion passes four to one. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I still need to do the next motion as well.
Say that again.
You still need to approve the next motion as well in order to do the agreement with the other entity.
You didn't get that to the front page. Okay, I need a motion for, and a resolution then for the change.
Resolution number is twenty-eight ninety-four.
Twenty-eight what?
Ninety-four.
Ninety-four. So we are making a resolution to approve the agreement as amended, correct?
Um, all, this motion, um, authorizes you to execute the interlocal agreement, so yeah, if you'll say.
For our neighborhood revitalization plan, which we just, which we just approved.
Which we just amended.
Yeah, local group will reference that.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, I need a motion.
I move to approve resolution number two-eight-nine-four. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor to execute an interlocal agreement with the Butler County Board of Commissioners, Butler Community College, Unified School District number four-nine-zero, and Unified School District number three-seven-five for the neighborhood revitalization program.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any further comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Thanks, Tabitha, for keeping us on task. Next on our agenda, it's written in, uh, and that is, uh, for CDBG environmental review.
So the, uh, as you, I believe I've communicated this all to you, um, the city has been awarded its funds of two hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars, two hundred and forty-seven thousand nine hundred dollars, uh, for the U.S. Small Cities Community Development Block grant for rehabilitation of the District one forty-two building. When you guys approved the grant application, you authorized the mayor to sign the grant application, but there are additional documents that, as a result of the, now, we have to complete and sign the next interview. So, um, what this actually is asking you all to do is approve or authorize the mayor to sign the environmental review. Um, I guess I would change that so that it says to sign documents related to grant, the grant number, so as we get these documents as they come in. Now, the actual grant agreement will come before you all, and you'll have the ability to approve that, but if there's any additional, um, for example, the environmental review is a, is a federal requirement that you have to go through in order to basically verify that there's no historic or, um, there's a whole list of different things that you have to complete as part of that process, so, um, in order to cover that, we need the mayor to sign those documents so we can move forward with that, and then the state will provide us with the grant agreement once it's completed and ready to go. That'll come before you all for review and approval, and then we'll receive the funds from the state and we'll be able to forward those on to the owners of the buildings so they can continue their project.
So you wanted to read documents related to grant number nineteen CR zero-zero-two?
Yeah, that would help. Uh, SCAD brought the, SCAD brought the environmental review documents by today, but, um, if, in the event that they didn't bring all the documents by that they needed and they're not named here, then we'd like some approval to proceed with those. And again, the actual grant agreements, we will bring them back to you for approval.
Okay, so that, that motion language would be changes to documents related to the grant rather than.
That's correct.
Um, question, who, who does the environmental review, who's this checklist that I'm signing, who's doing it and what kind of?
Um, so SCAD did the grant application, and so I believe that they were the ones that completed the.
I, I have it here. She left a copy today. Um, they've done everything, Scott slipped through it.
Yeah, I just flipped through it here, and, and, and what SCAD did is send out letters to all the regulatory agencies that would, um, need to have oversight over these federal funds and receive responses from them all, like air attainment, uh, historic, flood, those sorts of things, and, and so those documents were all compiled right here, and, and I just scanned through them and they looked all over.
She stated today, I'm going to pull it up really fast.
So I guess SCAD, Scott, is the answer to your question.
Well, as I look at it, airport hazards probably is probably a safe one to say it's not an airport hazard, things like that. These are pretty broad.
The, yeah, this is, in, in our, in our grants in the past, this is pretty, this is typical, um, and, and probably what you'll see after the grant agreement signed is then there'll be a motion for you as a board moving forward to probably designate David as the signature to documents relating to transfer of funds or things that may come along during the grant process.
Gloria McDowell, SCAD sent me, when she sent this to me today, she said, um, that this project is actually exempt from, um, the environmental, uh, exempt, so we don't have to, we don't have to do any notification or public hearing, so we're, we'll just go through.
So documents related to, all right. Any more questions from the commission?
No.
I entertain a motion.
I move to direct the mayor to sign the documents related to grant number nineteen dash CR dash zero-zero-two for one forty-two North Main.
Second.
Okay, so moved in second. Any further comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion, opposed, same sign? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Next on our agenda would be, we're at reports, the commission and advisory board updates. Go down the road. Anybody have a report from advisory boards or committees?
I went, uh, today to the Third Annual El Dorado Historic District Community Forum, and we heard from the, uh, Oil Museum Historical Society on how you go about researching a building or a house that you have, you know, as far back as they can take it, and it's amazing the amount of information they have down there. And what they don't have down there, you can find at the courthouse. So she talked about how the, uh, Oil Museum could be helpful to people who are wanting to rehab, uh, anything within the Historic District of El Dorado. Then we had a gentleman speak, uh, that has rehabbed the Knospin Print Tray Building. I didn't realize we had Print Tray in there, but David Turner, uh, had purchased that and rehabbed it and thoroughly enjoyed doing it. Again, like tearing into any old building, you find all these fun things, like how far down the original sewer pipe is, and when you're digging down to redo the sewer pipe to discover fiber optics have been run through there, uh, then you got a little bit of trouble, but, but he got that taken care of. Uh, he is renting it to a lady. Crazy.
Psycho Kitty.
Psycho Kitty is the name of the shop, and she designs jewelry, um, she's also into sculpture, and it's kind of a retail business, and she also wants to be able to, uh, put on demonstrations on how to make jewelry, you know, how to throw pots, anything like that. So she's really thrilled to be coming into El Dorado to go there. Uh, then Wade Wilkinson spoke about the Levinson Dry Goods Store and the interesting things that he had come up with in tearing things, uh, off and from the building, and, uh, it will be leased to Great Beginnings to move their retail, uh, facility over to that building, uh, so that what we know as Graves, which is now their building downtown, uh, will be used mainly for offices and conference rooms. Um, then we had an update, uh, on Main Street, on the different things going on there. It was a really interesting, uh, forum on taking an old building, doing something neat with it. Oh, the Elks Club, I'm sorry. They talked about the rehab of the Elks Building and pointed out that they had received excess sales tax and were very grateful for that. Very grateful for the fact that they're back in the building where they first started, and, uh, they have done an excellent job. Uh, my, I won't say how many, but my high school reunion was there a couple of weekends ago, uh, and it's a very nice facility, and, and they are thankful for the city and everything that we did to help them out getting that building up and running. That's all.
Okay, thank you.
I don't have anything.
Um, I went to the, the Supreme Court, uh, Monday night, and then I also attended the, the breakfast the next morning. Robbed elbows with, almost like, almost like all the attorneys except for ours there, uh, Tuesday morning. I got to sit down and have breakfast with two of the justices, and, um, I thought it was a really, um, nice and interesting thing coming to town, and, uh, kudos to everybody who put that on.
That one guy's from here.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's vile, isn't he?
Oh, I'm supposed to kick you in the shit?
Is that what he said?
Yes. I'll get you later.
Thank you. Yeah, that was a, really a pretty fascinating event. Was able to go there. Thanks for bringing that up, Commissioner Guthrie, and, and, and for attending the breakfast. Thank you for doing that. Excellent, um, and, and thank you to, uh, to Senator Givens, who planted that seed in our, in our, uh, judicial ear and got it here. It was pretty interesting. In the case they heard, two cases, uh, one of the cases they heard was murder case that was here in El Dorado, so, really was very fascinating and, and in our backyard. So, thanks for that. Uh, the past couple of weeks, a few things I've done, uh, I attended a REAP meeting last week and the, uh, I only have a couple more of those as, left in my tenure, but the, uh, REAP Executive Board, and, uh, the topic there was generally workforce and what some communities are doing about that, and they've agreed to establish task force and start to, to gather up better workforce information, um, certainly Wichita i- is, is the big, big, uh, person in the room, but everybody around them is dealing with workforce, and how can we keep that, that organization, keep that on a political agenda uh, and, and stay noticed for workforce? Interestingly, at last, earlier this week, I went to the Governor's Symposium for Early Childhood, and, um, workforce was a, a big issue there, too, and, and in two ways. Workforce trying to, 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 uh, train and have enough childcare providers, uh, on one side of the equation, and then the other one is, uh, access to, uh, quality childcare so that the work, so people can take jobs that are, that are either not your eight-to-five job or, uh, or even if it is eight-to-five, um, the accessibility to childcare. So recognizing that, that childcare is a pivotal piece in workforce development as well, and it was kind of an enlightening conversation, um, and Governor Kelly, uh, was present to, to do the opening address to that, so it'll be interesting to see where that goes from here. Uh, Main Street, was able to attend the Main Street Forum, was good. Chamber today had a career expo, and I bet they, I know they had, well, all of the junior class and senior class from Circle and El Dorado High School come through, plus some citizens come through just kind of looking for career options, um, I know the city had a great footprint, uh, at the career expo, and, uh, I think their, their equipment outside was a, appeared to be a hit. Um, I didn't get a chance to run any of it, but that, uh, that looked fun. I understand, uh, police chief is, is, uh, looking for a second job running a backhoe.
Scrambled an egg.
Scrambled an egg. Uh, so that was a great thing. Thanks to the chamber for doing that, um, it was, it looked to me to be a good success for the, for the first time through that in a while, so thank you for that. And that's really all I've got for reports. David, do you have a city manager's report?
Uh, yeah, there's a lot going on in town. As I, as we kind of previously mentioned, the city received notice of the commercial rehabilitation grant through the U.S. Small Business, uh, I'm sorry, Small City CDBG program. That was a two hundred and forty-seven thousand nine hundred and fifty dollar grant, uh, that will be used to assist the new owners of the District one forty-two building, primarily with reconstruction of the roof membranes and drains, although I'm also told that they'll also be able to use those funds to install a fire suppression system in the building, so, um, good things are happening in that, in that building, which will hopefully encourage more activity, uh, in downtown. We also have a couple of grants that we've received internally, uh, particularly the police department, they've been racking in some funds. Uh, we saw the fire department today, uh, the police department was granted a twenty-twenty grant from the federal Edward By, um, Byron Memorial Just Assistance Grant, and that's, uh, a thirty-three thousand three hundred and ninety-nine dollar grant that we will use, uh, for training, um, primarily for mental, uh, health. Uh, our law enforcement officers will get the training, and, um, they'll be able to be better suited to address or at least respond to some of the situations they deal with on a daily basis as a result of that grant. We just, uh, learned about that actually here fairly recently. And in addition to that, um, the department was also notified of a grant from the United States Department of Justice's Bulletproof Vest Program, um, which will provide us about three thousand four hundred dollars, um, which is enough to reimburse the city for about fifty percent of ten bulletproof vests. Um, so that will be a useful, uh, grant that keeps our officers safe and also, um, has the opportunity of reducing some of our operating expenses, so we, we appreciate that. The, coming up, a couple of things that the public may be interested to know, the twenty-third annual Walnut River Water Festival will take place on October fifteenth at Butler Community College. That event is for fourth graders, um, and it allows fourth graders to learn about water and wastewater, um, not only career opportunities, but just general water and wastewater science and what goes on in the ecosystem that are things that our folks need to know about and, and learn about as we treat water and, and deal with water on a daily basis. Excuse me. Uh, the library will be offering an Excel workshop presented by Beta, Butler Community College, on October sixteenth from nine-thirty to eleven-thirty a.m., so if anyone's interested in picking up some Excel skills. Uh, Susan V. Allen Hospital will also be hosting their annual Health Fest, which will take place on October seventeenth from seven a.m. to three p.m. at the SBA Leadman Health Education Center, um, and it's nearly Halloween, so that means there's going to be some fun Halloween-type activities. The, there'll be a historical cemetery tour hosted by the Kansas Oil Museum on October twenty-sixth. If you have interest in that, contact the museum for more details. In addition, the Parks and Rec Department will have an, a pumpkin painting contest on October twenty-ninth from four to. On October twenty-ninth from four to six PM. It's free to the public, so come on down. Um, pre-registration is required so we can get enough pumpkins, so go ahead and call the city if you're interested in that. Um, and then trick or treat on Main Street, a big featured event on October thirty-first, beginning at four PM through six PM. Right here in downtown, you can trick or treat, um, or if you're a business organization, you can set up shop and hand out trick or treats on Main Street. Um, so that's kind of it for, uh, for now.
Okay.
A lot going on. So I guess the last thing that I would say, youth basketball for grades first through sixth grade is now open. So if you have, uh, a, a young, young person in our community that would like to play basketball, um, contact Parks and Rec to get signed up for, for that event. That's good, that, that activity is going to be starting up here pretty soon. The deadline to sign up is November first. And as always, we're looking for coaches as well.
Thank you. Any questions for David from the commission? None. We'll move on to the next topic, which is executive session, um, for non-elected personnel. Kind of time, uh, would we like to have? I'm going to guess, um. Twenty minutes? You feel comfortable with that?
It's up to you.
Yeah, I get that. Twenty minutes?
Eight oh five.
Eight oh five. We're almost a quarter to, how about eight-ten?
You ready?
Yep.
I move to recess and to executive session pursuant to the non-elected personnel exception under KSA seven-five dash four-three-one-nine-B-one. For the purposes of discussing the city manager's annual evaluation and to reconvene the meeting at eight-ten PM in the city commission room.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any further comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. We will retire to executive session until eight.